Good evening. This 91st meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council is now called to order. Members of the council, as we are in a virtual meeting, please note that I will recognize you and say that you have the floor, and once you've been recognized, please begin talking. Instead of an invocation this evening, we will have a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight's showcase of Baltimore will be delivered by Corinthea Barber with the Baltimore City Chapter of the Links Incorporated. Ms. Barber, the floor is yours. One second, Ms. Barber, you're on mute, now you're good.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon to President Scott, Vice President Middleton, and all the members of the Baltimore City Council. On behalf of the Baltimore Chapter of the Links Incorporated, led by our president, the Honorable Stephanie Rollins Blake, I thank you for this opportunity to showcase our organization. The Links Incorporated is an international not-for-profit corporation established in 1946. The membership consists of more than 16,000 professional women of color in 288 chapters, located in 41 states, the District of Columbia, the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, and the United Kingdom. We are one of the nation's oldest and largest volunteer service organizations of extraordinary women who are committed to enriching, sustaining, and ensuring the culture and economic survival of African-Americans and other persons of color. The members of the Links Incorporated are influential decision-makers and opinion leaders. The Links Incorporated has attracted many distinguished women who are individual achievers and have made a difference in their communities and the world. We are business and civic leaders, role models, mentors, activists, volunteers, and even city council vice presidents, who all work toward a common vision by engaging like-minded organizations and individuals for partnership. Links members contribute more than 1 million documented hours of community service annually, strengthening their communities and enhancing the nation. The Links Incorporated has a long tradition of promoting and engaging in educational, civic, and intercultural activities that enrich the lives of the members of the Black community at large. The cornerstone of our service is our five programming areas: services to youth, the arts, national trends and services, international trends and services, and health and human services. Through our facets, we implement programs and initiatives that address the most critical needs of underserved communities. Annually, we impact the lives of more than 3 million people at home and abroad. Established in 1948 to promote friendship and service, the Baltimore, Maryland Chapter of the Links Incorporated was founded by Teresa Weaver, Audrey Norris, and Etta Pfeiffer, all accomplished African-American women who grew up in Baltimore City and graduated from the Baltimore public school system. During a time of racial segregation, they sought to organize other African-American women to make things better for people whose society had forgotten. For over 72 years, the Baltimore Chapter of the Links Incorporated has served as a dynamic force in the Baltimore area. Recognized as a best practice this chapter for the 2019-2020 service year, our impact has been broad, including providing transformational programs and services that positively impact lives in communities of color. Our programs have included providing a host of services at Blueford Drew Jimmison Academy, including seminars on interacting with law enforcement, art appreciation and expression, anti-bullying, and voter education and registration. Our chapter members coach and underwrite entrance fees for students participating in robotics competitions. We've established a chapter of the National Society of Black Engineers at Blueford Drew Jimmison STEM Academy, developing relationships and agreements with Morgan State University's School of Engineering and Architecture for tutoring and campus visits, partnering with the Clermont School for the Homeless in Jackmal, Haiti, where we provide school supplies and clothing. In addition, we financed solar panels and built a well to ensure that the residents had clean, running water, awarding over $30,000 in scholarships to Coppin State University and Morgan State University students through our graduate retention and support program specifically designed to support selected juniors and seniors based on financial need, awarding $20,000 in scholarships annually to Baltimore City graduates headed to historically Black colleges and universities, coordinating Be the Match donor registry events at area colleges, and mentoring young women through our Girls Empowerment Mission, GEMS2, program. As part of our ongoing commitment to the community, the Baltimore Chapter of the Links Incorporated, along with Links chapters throughout the state of Maryland, the District of Columbia, and the state of Virginia, will host a Zoom voter education forum on Wednesday, September 30th at 7:00 p.m. Our theme, Vote Like Your Life Depends on It Because It Does, reflects the monumental importance of this upcoming election. Our speakers will include former Attorney General Eric Holder, former Lieutenant Governor Michael Steele, Baltimore State's Attorney, Marilyn Mosby, and Dr. Lena Nguyen. Music will be provided by DJ Quick Silver. We invite the entire community to join us for an engaging and enlightening conversation. To register, please visit our website at linksincbaltimore.org or visit us on social media at baltimore_links. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Barber, and thank you for that great information, and thank you always for Links' commitment to Baltimore and making Baltimore a better place. Thank you so much. Roll call, the clerk will call the roll of the members.
President. President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Present.
Councilwoman McCray.
Present.
Councilwoman Dorsey.
Present.
Councilman Henry.
Here.
Councilman Schleifer.
Present.
Vice President Middleton.
Present.
Councilman Pinkett.
Present.
Councilman Burnett.
Present.
Councilman Bullock.
Present.
Councilman Reisenger.
Here.
Councilman Costello.
Present.
Councilwoman Stokes is absent, excused, Councilwoman Snead.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Who will now proceed with adoption of the journal?
Mr. President, the journal will be August 17, 2020 proceeding during the council members' inbox.
Well, follow Jackson, the journal will be adopted. The journal is adopted. A bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two and three of your agenda, executive nominations.
Bill 20-0279, Tyra Stanley, Member, Civilian Review Board, District 1.
This has been assigned to the Executive Appointments Committee. A bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 20-0596, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriations, Department of General Services, $25 million, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation.
Okay, Mr. Young, it's actually 2 million, 2.5 million.
What did I say, 25, 2.5 million dollars, sorry about that. For the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of 2.5 million dollars to the Department of General Services, Service 726, Administration General Services, to provide funding to balance the budget for fiscal year 2020 due to the unanticipated expenditures because of the COVID-19 pandemic, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0597, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Fire Department, $11 million, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $11 million to the Fire Department, Service 609, Emergency Medical Services, to provide funding for additional operating expenses resulting from overtime and the COVID-19 pandemic, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0598, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Health Department, $5.5 million, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $5.5 million to the Health Department, Service 315, Emergency Services Health, to provide funding for unanticipated additional expenditures resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0599, Supplementary General Fund Operating Appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development, $6 million, for the purpose of providing a supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $6 million to the Department of Housing and Community Development, Service 809, Retention, Expansion, and Attraction of Businesses, to provide funding for additional expenditures resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0600, General Fund Operating Appropriation Transfer, Department of Transportation, Service 690, to Police Department, Service 622, $2 million, for the purpose of transferring a general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $2 million from the Department of Transportation, Service 690, Sustainable Transportation, to the Police Department, Service 622, Police Patrol, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriations Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0601, Zoning Code Modifications, for the purpose of making needed changes to certain provisions that during the course of actively operating under the new zoning code were discovered to be functionally impractical and otherwise in need of modification to evade previously unanticipated consequences, allowing electronic signs in residential districts, making them a conditional use by the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals, specifying the zoning district requirements, and generally relating to conditional signs, correcting, clarifying, and conforming certain provisions, and generally relating to the zoning and development laws of the city of Baltimore, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0602, Sale of Properties, 4701 Greenspring Avenue, AKA Former Dr. Roland Patterson School, number 802, excuse me, 082, for the purpose of authorizing the Mayor and City Council of Baltimore to sell at either public or private sale all its interests in certain property located at 4701 Greenspring Avenue, AKA Former Dr. Roland Patterson School, number 082, and no longer needed for public use, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0603, Retirement Savings Plan Clarifications, for the purpose of clarifying the definition of earnable compensation for the members of the retirement savings plan, clarifying that any employee of the Enoch Pratt Free Library System who is not eligible to participate in the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System is considered able to be a member of the retirement savings plan, clarifying that any employee of the Baltimore Museum of Art or the Walters Art Gallery is not considered to be an employee for the purposes of the retirement savings plan, eliminating the time period limit for when an employer contribution made by mistake may be returned to the participating employer after payment of the mistaken contribution, modifying the composition of the Board of Trustees of the retirement savings plan, modifying the qualifications needed by certain trustees appointed to the board, clarifying the term of office for appointed trustees, clarifying that the board is responsible for any other assets assigned to the board by the city, clarifying certain provisions and language regarding the selection of board officers and their compensation, clarifying that administrative expenses of the retirement savings plan and in the management of plan, of planned assets may only be paid out certain, out of certain forfeitures or the unallocated planned asset account, clarifying which city benefits plans a trustee or board employee may not do business, clarifying certain provisions concerning when members will commence participation in the plan, modifying the definition of service for purposes of the retirement savings plan, clarifying certain provisions concerning contributions to the plan, clarifying certain provisions regarding forfeiture of non-invested employer contributions, and adding a provision that if a vested member, member of the plan transfers service to another city retirement plan, the employer contribution subaccount is forfeited, providing that a member who terminates employment and transfers service to another city retirement plan is entitled to receive the value of the member's mandatory employee contribution subaccount, and if applicable, rollover contribution subaccount, clarifying certain provisions regarding beneficiary distribution after a member's death, providing for distribution of small account balances, defining minority, excuse me, defining minor beneficiary, and generally relating to the retirement savings plan, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0604, Retirement Systems Minor Child Clarification, for the purpose of modifying and conforming the definition of minor child in the employee, in the employees' retirement system law, the elected officials' retirement system law, and the fire and police employees' retirement system law, sponsor, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0605, Minority and Women's Business Utilization Emergencies, for the purpose of clarifying and expanding the conditions for a city agency to obtain a waiver from the city's minority business and women's business contract utilization requirements, requiring that if an agency receives a waiver for an emergency, the agency submit a report to the Board of Estimates and the Minority and Women's Business Opportunity Office, defining certain terms, and generally relating to greater transparency and utilization of minority and women's business in city emergency contracting, sponsors, Burnett, President Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Clark, Middleton, Snead, Henry, Dorsey.
Thank you. Please add Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. I think Allen did a pretty good job at explaining what this does, but I'll jump into the rationale. You know, during the pandemic, we've seen a disparate, disparate impact or distribution of city funds for contracts, and we know that during a state of emergency, the waivers required or in procurement rules change. What this bill does is try to close many of those gaps and still try to ensure that certified NDBEs are offered opportunities to procure, for the city procurement process, and making sure that there is more, greater transparency for both the council and the public on where dollars are going during a state of emergency that we are in and likely will be in for an extended period of time. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0606, Banning Face Surveillance Technology in Baltimore, for the purpose of prohibiting Baltimore City government from purchasing and obtaining certain face surveillance technology, prohibiting Baltimore City government from contracting or subcontracting with another for the purpose of face surveillance technology, prohibiting any person in Baltimore City from obtaining, retaining, assessing, or using certain face surveillance technology, or any information obtained from certain face surveillance technology, providing for certain penalties, and defining certain terms, sponsors, Burnett, Cohen, Clark, Snead, Dorsey.
Please add President Scott as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. And so with this piece of legislation, we would be, if passed, we'd be joining Boston, San Francisco, Oakland, and California, who already have banned the use of this technology, as well as other states and municipalities are considering this, and primarily because the technology is not, is not ready, in many folks' opinions, for, for wide use. The, there was a study done by MIT and Stanford, and they did an analysis of the accuracy of facial recognition technology, and then their findings, they, they found that darker skin people had error rates between 20% and 34% when using this technology, and they tested a number of different types of software, and so when we talk about equity, we talk about criminal justice reform and mass incarceration and the impact that it has had on our city and our country, the use of technology that to this point has not shown to be capable of recognizing the faces of people of color accurately can have devastating impacts on people's lives if it's wrong and law enforcement moves forward with something like that. And we do know that this technology is used on social media platforms like Facebook for, on cellphone devices that use your face to open the device, and there may be security systems or biometric systems that businesses use or government agencies may use in order to allow people to enter. None of those things are prohibited in this legislation, but there is a lot of concern that the widespread use beyond that could be detrimental to our communities, especially the communities of color in Baltimore City. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Please add Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor of this bill that has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0607, City Streets Naming an Unnamed Alley Located in the Rear of 216 East Biddle Street, Mura Avenue, for the purpose of naming an unnamed alley located in the rear of 216 East Biddle Street, between Hunter Street and Guilford Avenue, Mura Alley, sponsor, Stokes.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0608, Indigenous Peoples' Day, for the purpose of designating Indigenous Peoples' Day observed on the second Monday in October as a legal holiday for the city of Baltimore, and generally relating to the observance of certain holidays by the city, sponsors, Bullock, President Scott, Middleton, Snead, Henry, Dorsey, Burnett.
Please add Councilman Reisenger as a co-sponsor, Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes, Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to our colleagues. Many of you will remember at a council meeting about a year ago, we had the opportunity to greet and recognize representatives of the Indigenous Strong Movement, and we do believe the time has come for us to be on the right side of history and celebrate a day that reflects the true legacy of this continent. I'll admit to you that I've already gotten some angry and unpleasant messages describing hate, but that's not what this bill is about. In addition to being an elected official, as you know, I'm also an educator and believe in fact-based historical recognition. It is without question that the new world as described by Europeans at the time was only new to them and was not discovery. The Native people have been on this continent for generations are evidence of this unmistakable truth. They have not only survived, but persevered in the face of land theft, broken treaties, genocide, and discrimination. So it's in that spirit that we should be celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. Thank you, Mr. President, thank you to the colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. I couldn't have said it better myself. It's time. Columbus Day has ran its course, it's time to honor a true holiday for folks who should be recognized. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0609, Rezoning, 4207 to 4209 Menlo Drive, for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 4207 to 4209 Menlo Drive as outlined in red on the accompanying flat from an I-1 zoning district to the OIC zoning district, sponsor, Schleifer.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0610, Repeal Righteous Town Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area and Plan, for the purpose of repealing ordinance 09-0219, which established the Righteous Town Plaza Transit Station Urban Renewal Area and Plan, and providing for a special effective date, sponsor, Schleifer.
This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0611, Zoning, Conditional Use Conversion of a Single Family Dwelling Unit to Two Dwelling Units in the R7 Zoning District Variances, 810 Argonne Drive, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions the conversion of a single family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R7 Zoning District on the property known as 810 Argonne Drive as outlined in red on the accompanying flat, providing for a special effective date, and granting variances from certain bulk regulations, gross floor area per unit type, and off-street parking requirements, sponsor, Henry.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill 20-0612, Explosive Material Reporting, for the purpose of requiring persons to report certain explosives to the Baltimore City Office of Emergency Management, defining certain terms and providing certain penalties, sponsors, Henry, Bullock, Cohen, Clark, Dorsey.
Please add Councilman Burnett, Councilman Pinkett as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill, unsurprisingly, had its origins in the tragedy in Beirut, where a warehouse of stored materials exploded, devastating the center of the city and killing and destroying thousands of pieces of property. We wanted to make sure that we are doing everything we can to avoid having something like that happen here, so this bill would require that the city's Office of Emergency Management be notified by any parties that are storing material that could provide or create this kind of danger. So thank you for my co-sponsors, and I look forward to a timely hearing.
Thank you, sir. This has been assigned to the Public Safety Committee. Sorry about that. Please add Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor.
City Council Bill 20-0613, Employee Healthcare Services Providers, Contraceptive Coverage, for the purpose of requiring that certain carriers wishing to do business with the city of Baltimore in order to provide health insurance to city employee, employees certified in advance of any bid submission, that they will provide certain contraceptive coverage, requiring certain standards from carriers providing health services to city employees, defining certain terms, and conforming and correcting related provisions, sponsors, Burnett, Bullock, Cohen, Clark, Snead, Dorsey.
Please add Council President Scott as a co-sponsor, Council Vice President Middleton as a co-sponsor, Chair recognizes, Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues. The Contraceptive Equity Act would provide expanded, or push for, provide expanded coverage healthcare services for city employees. Birth control is an essential part of that, of healthcare services in our country and in our city, and it allows individuals to make their own decisions about having children. it allows individuals to make their own decisions about having children. The Affordable Care Act, as well as the city's already existing plan, does provide some basic birth control coverage, but there are gaps in that requirement. And so this bill would close those gaps and put us as the leader in the state of Maryland on what we offer city employees and their families as it relates to access to birth control methods that best work for them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Health Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six One Four, rezoning Forty Fifteen Foster Avenue, Four Thousand Hudson Street, and Eight Oh One South Haven Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as Four Thousand Fifteen Foster Avenue and Four Thousand Hudson Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the I One zoning district to the I M U Two zoning district, and changing the zoning for the property known as Eight Oh One South Haven Street from the I Two zoning district to the I M U Two zoning district as outlined in blue on the accompanying plaque. Sponsor Cohen.
Thank you. This has been assigned... Councilman Cohen, do you want to address this one?
Sure. Just briefly, thank you, Mr. President. The proposed rezoning was initiated at the request of the owners of Forty Fifteen Foster Ave., who are interested in converting their warehouse on the property to additional office space. Community supports it. Department of Planning staff recommended that all three properties be rezoned, I M U Two, in response to the changing nature of the Haven Street corridor and the ongoing development taking place there. And we also hope to do this in order to protect trucking routes from further housing or development that doesn't belong on that corridor. And I look forward to a hearing. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six One Five, the Ban the Burn at Every Turn Act. For the purpose of prohibiting Baltimore city from entering into contracts that would authorize the use of incinerators or waste-to-fuel facilities and providing for a special effective date. Sponsors: Clark, Burnett, Reisinger, Cohen, Middleton, Dorsey.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Members of the council, I've written down my remarks to try to keep them brief. This is an amendment to the Prohibited Contracts Section of the City Code. It would be four point oh four, meaning it would be the fourth prohibited set of contracts that would be allowed in the city. This legislation is the final moment for decades to come to mandate the zero waste we have promoted for years now in arriving at this brink of failure or success. We are in a break now from Baltimore's Clean Air Act appeal. Remember, it got thrown out of court, we're appealing at the federal level, but they took a break. They took a break so that Bresco could sit down and negotiate an additional contract, an extension to its contract with the city of Baltimore, meaning years more of record pollution with asthma records to match, meaning millions of city subsidies for halfway emission measures, meaning opportunities missed for local business startups and living wage jobs in reuse and reclamation, and funding down the stack instead of up to scale with citywide recycling, reuse, and composting for all. Bresco's contract ends next year, in 2021. This bill says no more city contracts for incinerators, beginning with Bresco, no more, and including other incinerating proxies that are circling around the tent. We ask your support in all deliberate speed and now before Bresco or an incineration newbie hijacks the next generation of Baltimore's fun and opportunity. So, hope you'll sign on. Hope you'll help us get this going so that we are not in competition with the Board of Estimates on this one. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you so much. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six One Six, Comptroller, clerk of Board of Estimates. For the purpose of designating the comptroller or the comptrollers designate to be the clerk of the Board of Estimates and making certain modernizing corrections and clarifications. Sponsors: Henry, Cohen.
Please add Councilman Burnett, Council President Scott as co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey. All right. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is just a very, very minor correction to the code. Currently, the law requires the deputy comptroller to be the clerk to the Board of Estimates, but the law makes no provisions for what if there is no deputy comptroller at any particular time. And so this would change the law to make the comptroller or their designate the clerk to the Board of Estimates, ensuring that whether the deputy comptroller is available or not, the comptroller can designate any member of their staff to serve in that role. So I appreciate my co-sponsors and look forward to a timely hearing.
Thank you. This has been assigned to Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six One Seven, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R Eight zoning district variances Eighteen Oh One Howland Street. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R Eight zoning district on the property known as Eighteen Oh One Howland Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque, and granting variances from certain bulk and off-street parking requirements. Sponsors: Bullock.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock. Do you wish to address this one?
Just really quickly, Mr. President, thank you so much. Again, this is a simple conversion proposed by a member who lives in the community, who is doing good things and has community support. So again, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six One Eight, rezoning Twelve Twenty to Twelve Twenty, excuse me, Twelve Twenty to Twelve Twenty Two West North Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Twelve Twenty to Twelve Twenty Two West North Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the O R One zoning district to the C One zoning district. Sponsor Pinkett.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett, do you wish to address this?
Thank you, Mr. President. This rezoning bill, along with a resolution that's later on the agenda, allows this establishment to change license from a BD seven to a A seven and has community support. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six One Nine, rezoning Nineteen Hundred, Nineteen Oh Four, Nineteen Ten, and Nineteen Sixteen Light Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as Nineteen Hundred, Nineteen Oh Four, Nineteen Ten, and Nineteen Sixteen Light Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R Eight zoning district to the C One zoning district. Sponsor Costello.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six Two Zero, Planned Unit Development Amendment, Green Mount West Arts and Entertainment District. For the purpose of approving certain amendments to the development plan of the Green Mount West Arts and Entertainment District, Planned Unit Development. Sponsor Stokes.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six Two One, rezoning Two East Wells Street. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as Two East Wells Street as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R Eight zoning district to the C Two zoning district. Sponsor Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six Two Two, rezoning Thirteen Twelve, Thirteen Fourteen, Thirteen Sixteen, and Thirteen Eighteen East Fort Avenue. For the purpose of changing the zoning for the properties known as Thirteen Twelve, Thirteen Fourteen, Thirteen Sixteen East Fort Avenue as outlined and read on the accompanying plaque from the R Eight zoning district to the C One zoning district, and by changing the zoning for the property known as Thirteen Eighteen East Fort Avenue as outlined in blue on the accompanying plaque from the I One zoning district to the C One zoning district. Sponsor Costello.
This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty Dash Zero Six Two Three, zoning signs conversion of existing non-digital billboards. For the purpose of amending the provisions concerning the conversion of non-digital billboards. Sponsor Life Middle.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I'm good.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Land Use Committee. Resolutions to be introduced.
City Council Resolution Twenty Dash Zero Two Four Six R, approval of application for CDVG dash CD Two funding from the state of Maryland for eviction prevention. For the purpose of expressing the city council's approval of the submittal of an application for community development block grant funds in the amount of $2 million for the eviction prevention program to be administered by the mayor's office of children and family success through the Baltimore City Community Action Partnership. Sponsor: City Council President on behalf of the administration, Bullock, Clark, Middleton, Henry.
Please add Councilman Pinkett as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock. Councilman Burnett as co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. Given the severity of the situation we're dealing with, I'd like to suspend rules to move for immediate adoption.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Stokes, excused. Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Senator Clark.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty Dash Zero Two Four Seven R, approval for the exchange of a Class BD Seven license to a Class A Seven license, Twelve Twenty West North Avenue. For the purpose of providing the required approval under Maryland Code Annotated Alcohol and Beverage Section Twelve Nine Oh Two Point One D One, to allow the license holder holding a valid Class BD Seven beer, wine, and liquor license issued for use at Twelve Twenty West North Avenue, Baltimore, Maryland, Two One Two One Seven, to apply to the Board of Liquor License Commissioners for Baltimore City to exchange their Class BD Seven beer, wine, and liquor license for a Class A Seven beer, wine, and liquor license. Sponsor Pinkett.
Thank you. This has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Resolution Twenty Dash Zero Two Four Eight R, in recognition of the life of Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. For the purpose of recognizing the extraordinary life of the late Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Sponsors: President Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Clark, Middleton, Henry.
Please add Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman Reisinger as co-sponsors. Thank you, Councilman Dorsey as a co-sponsor. Thank you all for your co-sponsorship. I think it goes without saying that we have to honor Justice Ginsburg for all that she did and represented for this country. In a moment where you can literally see the fabric of the democracy attempted to be tore down from the highest office in the land, you have folks like Justice Ginsburg who stayed the course and who would not stand for allowing folks to do just that. And we have to also remember what she's meant to women's rights, the message that she sends to young women across the country about the potential things that they can do beyond their wildest dreams. It would be even very remiss today to not honor her, both in this resolution, but also in that a vice president with a moment of silence later on in the meeting. Also, and I'm going to talk about the upcoming resolution before we move this one, in this moment, we also have to show as a legislative body and remind the United States Senate, in particular Senator McConnell, what they said in 2016 before the election was done, that they should not, with a lame president or any president who is facing an election, be nominating and pushing people through the Supreme Court. And what we'll be asking them today is to do just what they asked of President Obama in 2016, and that is to let the people of the United States of America have a say by electing a president, be it President Trump or Vice President Biden, to decide who should nominate the next Supreme Court Justice to replace Justice Ginsburg. That is the right thing to do. That is the American way to handle this in our democracy where the people are supposed to have the ultimate say. Let them have a say, and let's put aside the partisan politics for at least two months and allow the citizens of this country to make a decision and then allow the next president, whoever it shall be, to select and push forward the nominee. Thank you. And Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Mr. President, I move the resolution.
Madam Councilwoman, you have to move to suspend rules for immediate adoption.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption. Second.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Stokes, excused. Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Yes. Thank you for this resolution and for a great life.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty Dash Zero Two Four Nine R, that the people have a say. For the purpose of calling on the United States Senate to not consider any Supreme Court nominations until after the American people have decided who the next president of the United States will be on November the third. Sponsors: President Scott, Bullock, Cohen, Clark, Middleton, Henry, Burnett.
Please add Councilman Dorsey, Councilman Pinkett, Councilman as co-sponsors. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McCray.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Please add Councilman Reisinger as a co-sponsor. Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yes.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Stokes, excused. Councilwoman Sneed.
Yes.
Senator Clark.
Yes.
Clark, I see you, yes?
I know. When it's black, I'll get my answer.
Consistency for what the Republicans did to us. Yes.
Thank you. The motion is approved. This resolution has been adopted.
City Council Resolution Twenty Dash Zero Two Five Zero R, paying DPW workers what they deserve. For the purpose of calling on the, excuse me, typo. For the purpose of calling on the, uh-uh, excuse me, typo, for the purpose of calling on the mayor to provide temporary Department of Public Works employees who work on the back of garbage trucks with an immediate four dollar per hour raise at a minimum and calling the mayor and union officials to renegotiate the contracts of those permanent Department of Public Works employees to include a four dollar per hour raise at a minimum. Sponsor Schleifer.
Please add Councilwoman Henry, Councilwoman McCray, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, Councilman Pinkett as co-sponsors. Uh, Chair recognizes, oh, Council Vice President Middleton, uh, and Chair recognizes Councilman.
I think, uh, Councilwoman Clark is trying to say something.
Councilwoman.
My apologies. Uh, I didn't, I don't have this on my agenda, so I didn't, it must be on the later agenda. Apologies. What is the resolution?
The Councilman, the Ca- Madam Councilwoman, uh, the Councilman is about to explain it in just one second.
Fabulous.
And please add Councilwoman Sneed as a co-sponsor. Chair recognizes Councilman Syf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So in follow up to, uh, previous hearings that we've had regarding the topic of trash collection, we've seen the condition that, uh, the city's trash collection, uh, unit is facing, uh, major staffing shortages. Uh, they're working under the most extreme conditions, whether it be the most extreme heat. Uh, now, all of a sudden, this week is now cold, but next week it might be hot again. And, uh, working in the rain, snow, and a global pandemic, and in speaking with a lot, um, of, of the men who, men and women who are working in, in these conditions, uh, what they'll tell you is that the pay is simply not enough. And, um, when the recycling went down, uh, originally, my, I, I went out there with some volunteers in my district and we were collecting recycling, and I can tell you, it's, it's difficult work. Uh, these, these, these folks make it look easy, but it's not, it's not easy. And so, um, when you hear that, uh, that, that people are making eleven dollars an hour working on the back of a smelly trash truck in the most extreme conditions, it's just not acceptable. And so, this resolution is really calling, uh, on official action for the council to state their position that these folks need at a bare minimum of four dollar an hour raise. And so, what that means is that for, uh, temporary employees, which, mind you, some temporary employees can be temporary for a long period of time before they're made permanent, um, moving temporary employees from eleven dollars an hour to at least fifteen dollars an hour. And then permanent workers from a bare minimum of sixteen dollars an hour, um, to a bare minimum of twenty. And what we'll find is that we won't have as high turnover and we won't have to start outsourcing as much as we've been doing. Uh, we've seen it, uh, during this pandemic especially, that we've had to outsource a lot of trash collection. Uh, really, anything that we can outsource is, is being outsourced, and that's very costly. And to, uh, pay these employees, uh, more money and, and what they deserve, um, not only is the right thing to do, but also is gonna save the city, um, big time and is also gonna prevent us from needing to continue down the road of constant privatization. And so, um, you know, I wanna thank all my co-sponsors. Hopefully, I've, I've picked up another one or two, um, during, during that. But it's just an important thing that we do and really take into account that although we've classifications in the city about how, um, different people at different, you know, in different jobs are paid, this is an extreme circumstance and deserves an extreme measure. So, uh, thank you very much to all my co-sponsors.
Thank you. Uh, please add Councilwoman Clark as a co-sponsor now that she has a explanation. Council Vice President Middleton, uh, and Councilman, uh, Rosengard as well. Uh, Chair recognizes the Council Vice President.
Um, yes, uh, Councilman Schleifer, I'd like to thank you for this, uh, resolution. But I just would like to make one correction that all laborers make eighteen dollars an hour. So if there's someone making eleven dollars an hour, they need to, to the human resources.
Well, Human Resources testified at the hearing that the, um, workers are making eleven an hour.
I don't.
Well, thank you. I mean, we'll figure this bill's about to be assigned to committees, so we will definitely, uh, get that information as we move forward. But thank you for that, Council Vice President. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, this has been assigned to the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee. And before we move on, uh, Mr. Young, uh, to the Councilman's point, as, as the council knows, I've been leading a group of volunteers over the past few weekends on helping with solid waste, uh, pickup and mist and dumping across the city. We know that these workers are working triple time and we have to support them in every way. And moving forward, that we have to assess how our solid waste department operates in every fashion, including, uh, what we're paying people. And Councilman Bo- I mean, Councilman Bullock, just note that we are coming to the ninth district, uh, this weekend. And we hope that we know we will see you there. Uh, the consent calendar can be found in section A of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move, we read short titles on second and third reader for the duration of the hearing.
Without objection, short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Short titles will be read for the remainder of the meeting. Uh, committee reports, we will now move to bills on second reader, Health Committee.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine five pesticide control and regulation.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the committee held a hearing on May seventh and a work session on September fifteenth. Uh, there's a set of amendments, nine in total, on the council member's desk or in the inbox. Uh, I move the amendments.
All right. All those in favor of approving the amendments, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Amendments are approved. Now this Councilman Burnett.
I move the bill amended, Mr. President.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, please note, Councilman Schifler, as they, as they know, um, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero one nine nine R, excuse me, City Council Resolution twenty dash zero one nine nine R investigating the hearing, well-being of the transgender community in Baltimore.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the committee, uh, held a hearing on September fifteenth, uh, and I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor of approving this, uh, resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. The resolution is approved.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two one seven R informational hearing sanitation of buildings under the Rental Assistance Assistance Demonstration Program and HUD Regulatory Authority.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for Resolution twenty dash zero two one seven R, the committee held a hearing on August eighteenth, twenty twenty, and I move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved. This resolution is approved.
City Council Resolution twenty dash zero two two zero R Department of General Services update on sanitizing city-owned buildings.
Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the Resolution twenty dash zero two two zero R, the committee held a hearing on Au- August eighteenth, twenty twenty, and I would like to move the resolution favorable.
All those in favor of approving this resolution, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This resolution is approved. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee.
City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three three City Streets opening air rights over a portion of the public right-of-way of the two hundred block of North Broadway.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the Housing and Urban Affairs Committee, uh, twice at the last council meeting, and we're breaking out five bills, the first of which is opening air rights over Broadway. Uh, we heard, um, the bill on September fifteenth, it's favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
Mr. President, I'd like to, sorry, I'm right, nevermind. City Council Bill nineteen dash zero four three four City Streets closing air rights over a portion of the public right-of-way of the two hundred block of North Broadway.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Uh, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine eight Jay Streets opening two three-foot alleys bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero four nine nine City Streets opening Inlows Alley and two three-foot alleys bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Avenue, Park Avenue, and Mulberry Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, move the bill favorably.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill twenty dash zero five four nine City Property renaming the Columbus Obelisk Monument to the Police Violence Victims Monument.
Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Yes. Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know, uh, Council Dorsey has something to say, but I'll just say that we heard the bill was August twenty fifth and there are amendments in your inboxes, and I move the amendments.
All those in favor of, of approving amendments, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, please note, Councilman Schifler as a nay. The amendments are approved. Uh, Chair recognizes, uh.
That nay, nay on the amendments was Pinkett.
Oh, is, oh, sorry about that, I'm trying to, uh, please note that is Councilman Pinkett as a nay on the amendments. Uh, Chair recognizes the amendments are approved. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, also for allowing me an opportunity here to, uh, speak to this bill for a moment before the vote is called. Um, I just wanted to acknowledge that we had a hearing on this bill and, um, all of the testimony in support of this bill came from residents of Baltimore City. And almost none of the opposition came from residents of Baltimore City. That's kind of one simple thing that I wanted to acknowledge. Um, second, um, none of the opposition that was brought during the committee hearing was on the subject of the proximity of this monument to a memorial that's about a hundred forty, a hundred fifty feet away. Um, but I recognize that members of the council have received, um, emails and phone calls, um, from folks. Um, if you're like me, also largely from people who do not live in Baltimore City, um, but lobbying on this particular point of its proximity to another memorial to some police officers. Um, and I just wanted to talk about that for a second. That memorial has been there since two thousand and three. Nowhere near as long as this obelisk has stood at this location. When that police memorial was, um, slated to go into this location, the FOP monument downtown was already under construction. And members of the community that I represent, um, among the various reasons why they were opposed to this police memorial going in this location, cited that, asking why, when there's about to be a memorial for this exact same purpose downtown, does there need to be a second one in this location only to a fraction of those members whose names will go on to the one downtown as well? There are no other memorials like this one anywhere else in the city. It might be different if there was one in every council district or if there was one in numerous city parks, but there aren't. There's just this one, and it went in, it went in there over the strenuous op- uh, opposition of members of the community around it who I represent today. And, um, and its location has nothing to do with the deaths or lives of the officers, uh, who are memorialized there. Um, so I just wanted to mention that. Um, and then I'll just, so also just wanted to talk about, um, the nature of this opposition. It just, um, it's troubling to me that at a time when the city of Baltimore is under consent decree, at a time when, uh, there is so much, uh, effort made to espouse this idea that police are working to, uh, improve community relations, this argument that one monument, um, paying homage to those, um, killed and brutalized by police officers should not be in proximity to this other memorial for certain other police officers, um, it just really is like an us and them mentality. It's a, it's, it's an opposition that says that we can't hold both in our hearts at the same time. Um, and I just struggle to understand how, um, how the presence of one would be prohibitive of me caring, um, and remembering, um, the other. Uh, and I would note that the proponents of this bill, um, victims of police violence, the families surviving victims of police violence, not one of them has said we can't have a monument to victims of police violence in such proximity to a memorial to these fallen police officers. Not one of the proponents of this bill has said that that monument to police officers is a problem for them. We stood in front of both of these and celebrated that, um, finally Baltimore could have this. Um, and, and I just, I really, um, wanna beg that you all take this into consideration in casting your votes this evening, that, um, one is not prohibitive of the other, that now is not the time for an us versus them approach to who we pay tribute to. Um, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill.
When the order, roll call.
Uh, yep, roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
I'd like to explain my vote, Mr. President.
What was yours?
So, uh, I support having a memorial for these victims as well. Uh, we should do that. Uh, I do not agree that it is appropriate to be, uh, that close proximity to, um, to the Southern Memorial. Um, and, uh, so I vote no.
Vice President Middleton.
I vote yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Mr. President, may I explain my vote?
What was yours?
Um, I, I think by all means, we, we need to have a memorial to victims of police violence. Um, matter of fact, we have to do more than just create memorials. There's, there's so much that we need to do as it relates to policies and laws and resources. Um, I personally could care less if both memorials are right next to each other, three feet, twenty feet. It doesn't matter to me. Um, my issue is that we're using, and I, it didn't bother me at first when this was introduced, but after thinking more, that we're using a monument that was committed to an individual that performed all these atrocities against vulnerable people. And, um, even though we are now repurposing it, um, if those atrocities were real, we should destroy that monument and build something new to the victims of police violence. Um, give them a monument that's truly there, that was dedicated to them, um, in spirit and in construction. Um, not repurpose, uh, a monument that some would have said was established for a murderer and then turn it over to victims of police violence. And so, that's why I vote no.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Have a Councilman Reisinger.
Which is Councilman Costello.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chailing, uh, Councilman Reisinger or something.
First, yeah, it's Councilman Rosengard.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I, I, I'd like to explain my vote, Mr. President, and my colleagues on the council. I agree with Councilman Pinkett. Um, I do support a monument for the victims, but I also respect those police officers. Um, and just because they don't live in the city, a lot of them are retirees that moved out, uh, with their families and all. And I got a lot of emails and phone calls from them. These are men and women who show on the police department that walked out of the house every day to protect all of us. And they're good police officers. I, I respect the, uh, monument for the victims, but I think it's, uh, I disagree. It's not the right location. Uh, I agree with what Councilman Pinkett was saying from the heart. Um, so I vote no.
My apologies, Councilman Risinger. Councilman Costello?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to explain my vote. Um, there's a couple of things that I'd like to note here. Um, and as always, uh, Councilman Pinkett from the seventh district very eloquently described some of my concerns. Um, first, unequivocally, I am in support of a memorial for victims of police brutality. Uh, and I agree with Councilman Pinkett that we need to do more than just build something or rename something. Uh, this is really about policies, uh, and the way that government operates. Uh, it's not just about renaming something. Two, uh, as someone who's part Italian-American, uh, it's certainly disappointing to me that Christopher Columbus is the person that, uh, i- is most celebrated as an Italian, uh, especially for people that are Italian-American. There are scores and scores and scores of scientists, professional athletes, artists, musicians, uh, business people, elected officials, that have contributed amazing things to American culture that are of Italian descent. Uh, and I hope that, you know, one day as we rethink, um, you know, our, our three Columbus statues in our city, um, we think about the original intent, why those things were named after Columbus. It wasn't about Christopher Columbus. It was about the contribution of Italian-Americans to American history. And Italian-Americans have made some pretty great contributions, uh, and unfortunately, uh, they have been discriminated against. Uh, they have not been discriminated against, not even a fraction of a pea in the pot to the extent that black people have been discriminated against in this country. But they have been discriminated against, and it's important to keep that in mind. The third concern that I have is about the proximity of, uh, this proposed renaming uh, to an existing monument to officers that lost their lives in the line of duty. I think when we look at everything that's going on now with the consent decree, and we look at what the commissioner sent, and I'll quote, "Both memorials are important and should be places of reflection and remembrance for loved ones. And those that visit should be able to do so in a setting without disruption or divisiveness." And unfortunately, I believe that, uh, while this, while I want to believe that this is not the sponsor's intent, I think that this inadvertently creates a situation where there is divisiveness for those that are celebrating the lost loves, loved ones. And finally, I must make the point that just because, uh, the individuals who have reached out are not residents of our city, they've provided a career of service to the city. Uh, and that's important to note. Uh, and we should treat their input, uh, just as importantly as the input that we take, uh, from citizens of the city. For those reasons, Mr. President, I vote no.
Councilman Stokes, excuse Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark?
Can you hear me?
No.
And now?
Okay, that's all I needed to know. I, um, yes, uh, I, you know, isn't it, it really makes me proud to hear how much my colleagues have anguish about this and thought about this and, um, 'cause I know I have too. But I like what was said earlier about we need to find places where our police, who we respect, the, our, and our, and have given their lives and victims who have given their lives because of police brutality could sit in peace at the same place and live peacefully with one another and work together for justice. So, thank you to my colleagues for being such an inspiration always to me. I vote yes.
President, ten votes yes, four votes no, one ask.
Thank you. Uh, the motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Judiciary Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five five seven, Baltimore City Administrative Procedure Act Regulations.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we held a hearing on this bill. There are amendments in my colleagues' inbox. I move the amendments at this time.
All those in favor of approving the amendment say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed say nay? The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five four, Commission on Sustainability Officers.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee held a hearing on this bill. I move the bill favorably.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed say nay? The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader. Labor Committee.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five four three, COVID nineteen, Committee Retention.
Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, Council President. Um, we had a hearing, uh, for this bill on September the seventeenth. It was sponsored by Councilmember Christopher Burnett. Uh, the committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. Um, the amendments worsened to councilmembers electronically.
Uh, Councilwoman, you have to, uh, move the amendment?
I'm sorry. I move the committee amendment.
All those in, all those in favor approving the amendment say aye?
Uh, aye. I'm not...
The amendments are approved. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello?
No, that's the, the next one. Yeah, not this one.
Yep. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
I move the bill favorably as amended.
All those in favor approving this bill say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay? The motion is approved. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill Twenty dash zero five four four nineteen, Lay Up until He's Right to Recall.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Yes, the bill came out of committee on Sep- September the twenty first, twenty twenty. It was sponsored by Councilman Christopher.
I have to in- interrupt you. Uh, the council, uh, with final objection, will invoke, uh, Rule ten eleven, uh, B two to allow for a late file committee report as the committee, uh, went over today. Out of objection, these rules will be suspended. These rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you. The bill came out of committee on September the twenty first, uh, twenty twenty. Uh, Councilman Christopher Burnett, um, sponsored the bill. The committee approved the bill as favorable with amendments. The amendments worsened to councilmembers electronically. Uh, who looked at the committee amendment? But first, I would like to address my colleague, Councilman Erica Costello, who has four amendments.
Well, ma'am, uh, Councilwoman, you moved the committee amendment, so we must, uh, go with those first. All those in favor of approving the...
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Councilwoman, your whole... Councilwoman, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, okay. I would appreciate the chance to just ask the chair to just briefly say which each amendment is because, um, I, I, I thought I was missing one on the sheet that came. Uh, just so I know, just so we all know, and I apologize, what are the amendments to the recall?
Councilwoman Snead, do you, do you want to address that?
The ones that we voted on earlier today, Councilwoman? I did not, sorry, I did not have those, um, I don't have them with me. Is there... From Eric, I mean, from... Well, I'm not quite sure. Originally from...
Everyone, hold on for one second.
Councilor Haust.
Everyone, hold for one second. Councilman Burnett, would you like to address the amendments?
Sure, if you'd like me to, um, I can, I can walk through them now. They weren't on mine.
Just the...
Uh, one second.
Go ahead, let's walk through it.
Yeah, give me one second. I'm trying to blow over my computer.
Council President, point of clear, can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilwoman Snead.
Is the Councilwoman referring to Councilmember Burnett's amendments or is she referring to... I read.
Councilwoman Clark?
To the amendments from today.
Got it. So therefore, we have the councilmen's and they are just...
Uh, I just... I just want to know what the amendments are that are on the floor we adopted today.
They haven't, we haven't gotten to the floor amendments yet. Councilman Costello hasn't introduced them.
The committee adopted amendments today in session today. So they...
Right.
It's floor amendments. They're in...
Right.
What are they? That's all.
Yeah, that's what the Councilwoman was about to address. Yeah.
So that's the one for hospitals to be exempted. That was the one that we voted on, eh, that passed. The other one, the other two, uh, failed, and so we are, well, actually, Councilman Erica Costello are reintroducing them on the floor.
Thank you. Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I'm glad I asked.
All right, there was a motion on the floor. All those in favor of approving the committee amendment say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All the, all the polls say nay? Those amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello. You're on mute, Mr. Councilman. You're good now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, there's a package of three amendments that I'm offering. Um, before I bifurcate those amendments, because my understanding is there's going to be different votes on different amendments, um, I would like to ask for confirmation that amendment number one was adopted during the committee hearing today. That's the one on page two after line nine, inserting general on the same page in lines twelve and thirteen and fourteen, striking one, two, and three. Other technical amendments, and then the addition of language to exclusion. Employer does not include hospital as defined in State Health General Article nineteen dash three oh one, definitions of a hospital. Um, Caitlin, can you confirm that?
Let me confirm what committee said.
Thank you.
Uh, that can, and Mr., and Mr. Councilman, I believe that the hospital amendment is exactly what Councilwoman Snead was just speaking to, to prior to you of being addressing that that amendment was approved today.
I, I could only assume so, Mr. President. I just wanted to confirm, and didn't want to lose an opportunity to move a critical amendment.
Mr. President, point of information.
The answer is Councilman.
Given that the committee chair and all the members of the committee, who I can see are nodding yes, what are we still waiting for?
We're gonna wait, we're gonna wait to con, Mr. Councilman, we're gonna wait to confirm it to make sure that it actually happened the, the way that we, we want it to be, for law and not just with head nodding. Uh, Mr. Young?
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought I was pretty clear in what I requested. I appreciate you clarifying that.
Mr. Young?
Yes, so in the committee, there were three amendments. Amendment number one was adopted. Amendments two and three were not adopted.
There we go. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I move amendment number two.
And, Mr. Councilman, uh, as you're, as you're, uh, moving these amendments, please speak to which, uh, what the purpose of the amendment is.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Uh, this on page four, strikes line twenty-nine and thirty in their entirities and substitutes. Has prior experience within the position or has the same skills required by the position and would not require additional training. Thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, although, Chair recognizes Councilman Clark.
I'd like to speak to that because I'm on the committee. This is why I ask, because I, I saw these amendments on the agenda and I don't, I didn't know how. The, these are two, these are two amendments that, that come from a very reputable people from, um, of the community. I, I can't remember the organization. But basically, what this does is in the law, it originally says that, okay, there's the right of recall, but that people who are, but that people who are recalled and they're, and ha, eh, and have, are coming back and they're not in the, the position they had before are entitled to the kind of training you would give to a brand-new employee going into that second job, going into the offered job. That's what's in the original bill. This said, um, and I, again, I don't have it in front of me, but this basically says that you come in, I, I don't want to misrepresent it because I'm opposed to it. You come in and you're, but you can't come in, your job's not available, and that's... Could you, could someone who has a written copy read what the amendment is that's before us, please? I don't want to misstate it because I'm opposed to it.
Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Councilwoman Clark, there's an email sent at six twenty-two PM this evening from Juana Austin, which has the full language of the amendment. In short, I can explain the justification behind it. So the existing language is too broad and will force hotels to place workers in positions where they have no prior example or for which they may not be suited at the expense of those who are already trained masters within a specific job. For example, a front desk attendant likely wouldn't be suited to come back and work as a line chef in the kitchen. Similarly, a line chef wouldn't necessarily be fit for a position in a hotel accounting department. This alternative language ensures that hotels bring back people in order of seniority, provided it is to fill a position that they have worked before and/or already have experience in. This makes the recall process more manageable for the hotel operators, more fair to the workers, as order of recall will factor in their experience, skill set, and prior training. So I, I think it's important to note, and I don't know, you know, how many, how many hoteliers, you know, our colleagues have, have been discussing these issues with, but we have a hotel industry in the city that's part of our hospitality sector, which is our third-largest employment sector in the city. Um, they were at a rate of occupancy of one to two percent for like four... We have a situation where general managers are working as front desk attendants because they have had to scale back so dramatically in terms of their workforce to deal with the excessive losses of revenue as a result of COVID nineteen. So this is, this is intended to address that and to assure that we, hotels, seventy-six of them that we have in the city, are recalling employees in, in an appropriate and responsible manner to ensure that their operations aren't significantly impacted.
Point of order.
Hold everybody. Uh, Chair recognizes Councilman Henry. He had his hand up first, Councilwoman.
Uh, point of order, Mr. President. We're debating a motion that hasn't been seconded.
I'm not debating. I'm providing clarification.
I, I, I'm...
Mr. Councilman? Mr. Councilman, he, before he could even get a second, Councilwoman Clark asked to be recognized, to ask to make sure that the full thing of the bill was read. Uh, Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. President.
Councilman Henry. Councilwoman Clark is being, has been recognized.
He, he has a point, we haven't had a motion, but it's been an explanation. So what was explained was what's before us now. That basically says, the important part that I'm worried about, that, um, basically that the returning, recalled people are coming into their job titles and in the original bill, it says they're coming back based on seniority, as in both amendments. But that they are entitled to come back to jobs for which a new employee never worked there before would have, would get training to, after being hired. That's the difference. So what's before us is, uh, an amendment from the industry which says they, that basically they have to get the same job that they got. But my colleague has made the case for me, talking about people that are taking different jobs already from the ones they're used to in these hotels. So I'm, I, I, can I make a motion against what's on the floor?
Mr. President, point of order, there's a motion on the floor if the chair will obtain a second for the motion that's been made, Mr. President.
One second, before we do that, uh, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Burnett?
Uh, so the only thing I, I would note, uh, were two things. One, it was not discussed in any detail in, at the committee, um, and so, you know, the press rating to have new information coming now on the floor. Uh, the other piece I would, I would highlight is that, yes, we have clarity on the recall process. It would also allow for hotels to reclassify positions before bringing people back, uh, and effectively eliminating their qualifications that they may have. Uh, it, it opens that window for that since we're having a debate on the floor right now instead of, uh, discussing this in committee.
It can't be a debate because we haven't seconded the motion.
Councilman Henry, please wait to be addressed. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I'd like to respectfully address the comment from my colleague in the eighth district. This isn't new information because I did call you three hours ago to let you know that I would be introducing the amendments on the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
I would...
Mr.?
If you're referring to the committee process, uh...
Mr. Councilman, is, no, no need, no need for the back and forth. Councilman Costello, uh, if you want to make the motion, please.
Mr. President, I move amendment number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of the bill, say aye, I mean amendment, sorry, say aye.
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 Roll call.
Call, roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen? Mr. President, here's feedback. We can move, uh... Councilman Cohen, once again?
No.
Thank you. Councilwoman McCray?
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey?
No.
Councilman Henry?
No.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
No.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
No.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Yes.
Councilman Stokes is excused. Councilwoman Snead?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Clark?
No.
That is eight yeas and six nays and one accent.
This amendment is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman, uh, Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm moving amendment three.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Chair recognizes, one second, Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark. Sorry, Councilwoman, I couldn't see you, you moved on my screen.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry for that, love that, Councilman.
Is this the amendment, it's okay, I just need to know from what, I, I at least need to know what I'm voting for, I, other people nay. I don't have the, these amendments before me. Is this the one that says that a person who is called back and offered a job has two days to respond? And then it expires or, and originally it's five days? And while I'm on the floor asking that question, that's right?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me just say, did you ever try to get a return call from a place like that, in a situation like that, in two days? And if you did, fine, vote for it, but if you didn't and you know how hard it is to connect, leave it the way it was originally in the bill, thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. President?
Roll call.
President Scott?
Mr. President, point of order, may I respond to that?
Uh, there's no need, Councilman, it's already been called and done.
Thank you.
No, no, Kayla.
Councilman Cohen?
No.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey?
Mr. President, I would just note that there are members of this council that you can't get a call back from in two days. I, I would, I would really stress the point that anybody that is really sincerely trying to uphold the, the spirit of this law would be contacting these employees before they are reaching out to hire new people. The difference between three days and five days, or two days and five days, is not more than the length of time that it would take to find somebody else who hasn't already worked for you as an employee in order to bring them in as a new employee. I just, it seems, it just seems like it's, it's determined to cut people out, to cut them off at the opportunity and, and really undermine the spirit of this law, so I'm voting no on this amendment.
Councilman Henry?
No.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yes.
Vice President Middleton?
No.
Councilman Pinkett?
Yes.
Councilman Burnett?
No.
Councilman Bullock?
No.
Councilman Reisinger?
No.
Councilman Costello?
Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote. This is not about cutting people out. This is about history over the last five months of the city being put in a position where we're forced to react to executive orders from the governor of the state of Maryland. The governor repeatedly, without coordination or even communication to local jurisdictions, has done a series of press conferences on Wednesdays at three or four PM, making changes to executive orders, which has put the city of Baltimore in a corner. I know this from co-chairing the mayor's COVID-19 Small Business Recovery Task Force, where we have had to respond instead of being able to proactively think out how we are going to react to the governor's new executive orders. So when a new executive order comes out from the city, say on a Thursday afternoon, it's announced that it goes into effect on a Friday at five PM, and things like restaurants are reopened, or the maximum capacity for a performance venue is increased from twenty-five total people to a maximum capacity of twenty-five percent inside. Hotels are put in a situation where they have to rapidly staff up. So there is some premise behind the two days versus the five days. I don't think this is about cutting people out of the bill. This is about businesses that are put in a position where they have decreased revenues and then automatically the light switch is flipped on and they have to react accordingly because they're going from an occupancy of two percent to fifteen percent in a matter of days. So for those reasons, I vote yes.
Councilman Stokes is absent, Councilwoman Snead?
I want to explain my vote. I feel like everyone has, is saying that they want to get back to work and they want to get back to work immediately. And so we have to remember that it's based on the call. If I call you from an employer and I'm calling you, it's from that point on. And if an employer calls me and says you have the opportunity to get back to work, I'm going to say yes. If I've been saying the whole time that it's important for me to get back to work, I want to get back to work. Doors are open, please allow me to get in. Why would I then wait five days to say, well, let me think about it? It just does not make sense to me. If they get the opportunity, once they get the phone call to say, we're opening up, Shannon Snead, are you ready? I can't imagine that someone will say, well, give me five days to think about it. It's, I want to do it now, yes, I'm going to do it, and it's from that time. So on that order, because I want to get back to work and I'll be in the job market soon as soon as they call me, I'm voting yes. Call me, I'm ready to go to work.
Councilwoman Clark?
That's what number? Where have you had to move? Have you got that same? We know how to reach you, but we have to go through channels to do that? Okay, bring them in and hire them for a couple of days. This is hiring for the long term. Give them a chance to be found and to not just have a message left on the wrong phone or with a child in a house. And so I'm voting yes, because I know how it is and so do my constituents.
There's eight no, six, excuse me, eight, yes, six yeses and eight nos, Mr. President.
Thank you, uh, very much. This, uh, uh, amendment fails. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Oh, oh, um, I move this bill favorable as amended.
Roll call.
President Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Cohen?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray?
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer?
Mr. President, I explain my vote. So, you know, I appreciate, um, this bill, uh, and the bill sponsor's intention, but, you know, in, in reviewing it, it's really like a subset of a subset. And the irony that I see in, um, in where we are today is that there was a lot of departures from the city, a lot that we have no explanation for. Um, and assuming some of those decisions were COVID-related as well. And, you know, we're talking about longtime city employees who've been around decades. And, you know, they should have a right to recall as well. And this bill in itself doesn't give people in City Hall, for instance, the right to recall. And so here we're putting on this bill and we're saying, do as we say, not as we do. And, uh, folks even, um, who have similar roles, um, in City Hall, as we're talking about within the private industry right now, uh, wouldn't apply this bill, and so, uh, for that reason, I vote no.
Vice President Middleton?
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett?
Mr. President, may I explain my vote? Um, despite the, the vigorous debate that we had on this bill, and I think everyone would agree that, um, we want everybody back to work as soon as possible. Um, the, the economic hardship, um, around COVID-19 has been, um, just as devastating as the health impact. Um, but, but we are profiting, profiting a solution to getting people back to work that even our own law department says may be legally indefensible. Um, and that might not, um, um, measure up to any constitu, constitutional challenges to it. And, um, I want to dovetail on what, uh, Councilman Schleifer said. Um, we, we are putting an onerous burden on, uh, the hotel industry that we won't even put on ourselves. And so for that reason, I vote no.
Councilman Burnett?
Uh, may I explain my vote? Um, so, you know, it's been a, a lot of, very spirited debate, I do respect, uh, everyone's opinions here. Um, I, there's a, a few things I would clarify, uh, and one, you know, the, your conversation about who this applies to. Uh, this body, whether it's this term or not, has invested a lot of public dollars into the hotel industry, uh, whether that be through, uh, PIFs or pilots, uh, or, or other, um, uh, financial, uh, investments into the industry. And, and what we're talking about here are sanitation workers, we're talking about security guards, we're talking about low, low-wage, hard-working, uh, employees, and most of which I would wager probably are citizens of Baltimore, unlike the owners of these hotels that we've continued to provide subsidy for. Uh, and so at a time that I am absolutely understanding the, the plight of the industry itself, uh, I, I think it's a misrepresentation, uh, to say that, you know, this, this should be something, we shouldn't vote for this because, uh, it doesn't apply to city employees. Uh, I'm happy to, to work on similar language for that. Um, but we, this body passes bills all the time that do not have a universal impact across industries, apart, across government agencies. I mean, there is nuance in policymaking that each one of us has put forth. Uh, and, and so I, I would push back on that to, to, to think that every single piece of legislation should be as far-reaching and inclusive as possible. That's just not the case, there's always room for nuance. We have voted on nuanced-related policy changes. And in this instance, we're talking about people who to no fault of their own, uh, have lost, uh, viable employment, a job that were not very well-paying, uh, and who won an opportunity to come back if there's an opening. This bill does not require hotels to reopen, uh, it does not require them to increase wages when they reopen. Uh, it, it simply provides an opportunity so that when people, when they do come back, when those banquet halls do reopen, uh, if they reopen, uh, for the people who have worked for these places, many of which who testified in committee indicating that they've worked for many of these hotels for fifteen, twenty years. Could you imagine working that long, uh, just for a, a global pandemic to completely wipe away your livelihood, livelihood? Um, and, and I understand that, you know, we, we need to also work with the industry as well, and I'm willing to do so. Um, there was comments made in committee that we haven't, uh, been willing to speak to representatives, which is untrue. Uh, we, we've had multiple hearings on this, uh, I've spoken to representatives from the industry. Um, the, the, you know, I, I'm not sure how we can engage folks, uh, other than the way that we've done it. Um, and, you know, it, it, I'm a yes, uh, on this, obviously. Uh, but I, but I would just wanted to clarify a few key things here that have been said today about this bill.
Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Councilman Reisinger?
Yes.
Councilman Costello?
Mr. President, I'd like to explain my vote. Um, you know, I'm certainly disappointed that, um, that the council chose not to adopt the, um, modification from five days to two days. Um, again, I think that Councilman Pinkett did an excellent job articulating some of the concerns that I have, as did Councilman Schleifer. Um, the fact that, uh, this doesn't apply to the city, um, you know, gravely concerns me and the legal issues raised by the law department for those reasons on the low.
Uh, Stokes absent, Councilwoman Snead?
Thank you, I'd like to explain my vote. Uh, as the chairwoman of this committee, I've gone back and forth with this bill. I have thought about this so many times and gone through the bill. And I understand after hearing from so many of the workers, and some sit longer than that, Councilmember Burnett, that some were there for forty years. I got a woman from, who was at a hotel for forty years. And so it just made me think, like, I don't know what I would do if I was in this predicament. And so because of that, I know it's no easy answer whether I vote yes or no, but I'm going to go ahead and say, yes, that I, I'm going to stand by the people, um, going to work who work at hotels. And hopefully, at some point, all of them will be brought back. And I just don't believe they, they won't be brought back to a certain extent because there's plenty of workers out there and there's still hotels out there. And they will be called back at some point, we're going to get better, we're going to recover from this.
Councilwoman Clark?
As a lead speaker of this legislation and his, uh, excellent remarks just now, um, and all...
As the lead speaker of this legislation and his excellent remarks just now, and also the chair of the committee, who has worked so hard in such a difficult, never-before-for-us situation, in the middle of a COVID pandemic, with a bunch of people for which this bill represents a shred or even a rope of hope, that the 40 years, 10 years, 10, five years they've put in at where they work, and then COVID came, that it means something, that it gives them standing to be recognized and invited when things get better, so that they're not just cats adrift and let to float away, and new people come in for their jobs when the money comes back. So, I'm voting yes, and I'm thanking the chair who went through, I'm sorry, I was part of your problem, so were a lot of us, but it's so important and you know it and act it that way. Thank you for that respect. And I'm happy to vote yes.
President, that is 11 yeas and 3 nays. Members in our absence.
Thank you. This bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0562, Baltimore City Police Officers' Residency Requirements.
Before I recognize Councilwoman Snead, I just want to say that I think that that is an example of how you can have healthy but respectful debate and be able to work together to make sure that a bill comes out in the best form possible. So thank you to the chair, to all the sponsors and all my colleagues. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Snead.
Thank you, uh, thank you. So, the residential requirements bill was actually heard on August 20th, 2020. It was sponsored by me, Councilwoman Shannon Snead. The committee approved this bill as favorable, so I move the bill favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Land use committee.
City Council Bill 20-0539, Res zoning 555 Gilford Avenue and Block 6694, 142.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
With our objection, the findings of fact will be approved. The findings of fact are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Mr. President, there are amendments to this bill, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0541, zoning, conditional use, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in R8 zoning district, 1711 Gilford Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
With our objection, the finding of fact will be approved. The findings of fact are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
Council President, this bill has amendments, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, the amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0560, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, Variance 2437 Madison Avenue.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
I move the finding of facts.
With our objection, the findings of fact will be approved. The findings of fact are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
This bill has amendments, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
I move.
Uh, sorry, Councilman Pinkett?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to invoke City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advance from second to third reader of this bill.
Uh, roll call.
President Scott.
Yes.
Councilman Cohen.
Yes.
Councilwoman McCray.
Yeah.
Councilman Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Henry.
Yes.
Councilman Schleifer.
Yes.
Vice President Middleton.
Yes.
Councilman Pinkett.
Yes.
Councilman Burnett.
Yes.
Councilman Bullock.
Yes.
Councilman Reisiger.
Yes.
Councilman Reisiger.
Yes.
Councilman Costello.
Yes.
Stokes, absent, Councilwoman Snead.
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark.
Did you hear me?
I didn't, but I think it's a yes.
Thank you. The ayes have it, the bill will be on third reader today.
City Council Bill 20-0590, zoning, conditional use parking lot, 1301 to 1325, Eddig Street, 505, 507, 509, and 511 West Lafayette Avenue, and the alley adjacent to 1325 Eddig Street.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
I move the finding of facts.
With our objection, the findings of fact will be approved. The findings of fact are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
This bill has amendments, I move the amendments.
All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The amendments are approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisiger.
I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, please note, Councilman Dorsey as a nay. Uh, this bill moves to third reader. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee.
City Council Bill 19-0435, sale of property, air rights over a portion of the public right-of-way of 200, of the 200 block of North Broadway.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of the committee on September 17th, 2020. Sponsor, President Scott, on behalf of the administration, the committee approved the bill as favorable, I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0500, sale of property, two three-foot alleys bounded by Tyson Street, Wilson Alley, Park Avenue, and Marlborough Street.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill came out of committee on September 17th, 2020, and of course, the sponsor again was President Scott, on behalf of the administration, and the committee approved the bill as favorable, I move the bill as favorable.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0552, tax credits, historical properties.
Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. This bill also came out of committee on August 27th, 2020. The committee approved the bill as favorable, but I would like to offer a floor amendment. The floor amendment has been distributed to council members electronically. This amendment clarifies that the Director of Finance will be charged with making rules to administer the tax credit after consultation, consultation with the Director of Planning. Again, there was, you know, just a dialogue of who would do it, and they came to the conclusion. So I move the floor amendment.
All those in favor of approving this amendment, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Amendment is approved. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I move the bill favorable as amended.
All those in favor of approving this bill, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reader. Third reader requires the invocation of City Council Rule 12-1 for same-day advance from second to third reader.
City Council Bill 20-0560, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R7 zoning district, Variance 2437 Madison Avenue. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Third reader for final passage.
Uh, City Council Bill 18-0202, repeal of Madison Park North Urban Renewal Area and Plan. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
Mr. President, I read, uh, Stokes on the last bill, just want to mark that he's absent on the previous.
Please note for the record that Councilman Stokes has an excuse, absent for today's meeting. Mr. President, continue.
Yes, sir. City Council Bill 19-0427, rezoning 1020 West Pratt Street. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0429, big constructions posting owner information. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 19-0452, employee-owned businesses reporting. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 20-0540, corrective, city streets renaming Violet Hill White Way with an I to Violet Hill White Way with a Y. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 20-0546, natural resources, forest and tree conservation. President Scott, Cohen, McCray, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisiger, Costello, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements, members, when you hear your committee announcements, please proceed with your announcement. We will start today at the top, Budget and Appropriations. Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. You threw me for a twist there, so I need about five seconds to open up my hearing announcements. Thank you. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. BNA committee will hold the hearing on Thursday, October 1st at 2:00 p.m. on Council Bill 20-0596, supplementary general fund operating appropriation for the Department of General Services in the amount of $2.5 million. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. BNA committee will hold the hearing on Thursday, October 1st at 2:01 p.m. This is for Council Bill 20-0597, supplementary general fund operating appropriation for the Fire Department in the amount of $11 million. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. BNA committee will hold the hearing on Thursday, October 1st at 2:02 p.m. on Council Bill 20-0598, supplementary general fund operating appropriation in the amount of $5.5 million. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The BNA committee will hold the hearing on Thursday, October 1st at 2:03 p.m. on Council Bill 20-0599, supplementary general fund operating appropriation, Department of Housing and Community Development in the amount of $6 million. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. BNA committee will hold the hearing on Thursday, October 1st at 2:04 p.m. on Council Bill 20-0600, general fund operating appropriation transfer, Department of Transportation Service 690, the Police Department Service 622, in the amount of $2 million. Mr. President, would you like me to do judiciary as well?
10-4.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary Committee will hold the hearing on Friday, October 2nd at 10:00 a.m. on Council Bill 20-0615, burning at every turn act. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Education and Youth Committee, Councilman Cohen.
No, sir.
All right. Equity and Structure, Councilman Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Um, the 20, I'm sorry, the Equity and Structure Committee will meet on Thursday, September 24th at 1:00 p.m. here online to hear City Council Bill 20-0496, records management, modernizing, correcting, and conforming. The Equity and Structure Committee will meet the same day, Thursday, September 24th, at 1:01 p.m. to hear Council Bill 19-0353, charter amendment, underground conduit system, sale, transfer, or franchise prohibited. The Equity and Structure Committee will meet the same day at 1:02 p.m. to hear Council Bill 20-0550, charter amendment, City Council Modernization and Restructuring Act. The Equity and Structure Committee will meet the same day, Thursday, September 24th, at 1:03 p.m. to hear City Council Bill 20-0551, charter amendment term limits. The Equity and Structure Committee will meet on Thursday, September 24th at 1:04 p.m. to hear City Council Bill 19-0442, equity assessment and fiscal note requirement. And last, but by no means least, the Equity and Structure Committee will meet on Thursday, September 24th at 1:05 p.m. to hear City Council Bill 19-0442, charter amendment disposition of city-owned real property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Executive Appointments Committee, Councilman Stokes is not with us today. Councilman Vice Chair, Burnett, are there anything for the Executive Appointments Committee?
Sure.
And Councilman, while you're doing this, you can do your committee as well, your two.
Got it. So, the Executive Appointments Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, October 7th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. to review the nomination for the civilian review board. Tyler Salee, member of First District. And I would like to suspend the rules to announce the hearing.
With our objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Uh, the Health Committee will hold a hearing on Tuesday, October 13th, 2020, at 10:00 a.m. for Council Bill 20-0613, employee healthcare service, employee healthcare services providers contraceptive coverage at the request of myself. And sorry to be out of order, but I'd also like to announce that tomorrow, Tuesday, September 22nd, the Health Committee will have a hearing at 2:00 p.m. on 20-0239R, informational hearing responding to mental health crisis at the request of Councilmember Cohen, District 11. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Housing and Urban Affairs Committee, Councilman Bullock.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. President. We have a few to announce. So first, next week, Tuesday, September 29th at 2:00 p.m., Housing and Repairers will be hearing City Council Bill 20-0592, Office and Homelessness Establishment Administration of Permanent Housing Voucher Program. That will be followed at 2:30 p.m. for City Council Bill 20-0606, at 2:30 p.m., Ordinance and Business Peoples' Day. We will also move forward with our- We will also move forward with our additional hearing. So going to October, going to October, we will have at 2:00 p.m. on October 27th, City Council Bill 200490 Urban Renewal Carol Camden Renewal Area Designation Urban Renewal Plan. That will then be followed at 2:10 p.m. for City Council Bill 200553 Ordinance Urban Renewal Washington Village. That will then be followed, again on the 27th of October, at 2:20 p.m. for City Council Bill 200565 Ordinance Urban Renewal Park Heights, followed at 2:30 p.m. by City Council Bill 190477 Ordinance Urban Renewal Camden Business Area Amendment. And then that will be followed at 2:35 p.m. by City Council Bill 200580 Ordinance City Streets Closing A Portion of South Boston Streets Extended from South Haven Streets. And then lastly, will be followed at 2:40 p.m. by City Council Bill 200582 Ordinance City Streets Closing A Portion of Boston Streets. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman. We're going to go back to Councilman Henry. Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sorry, we had the wrong bill number for the very last hearing. On Thursday, September 24th at 1:05 p.m., Equity and Structure Committee will hear Bill 20-0563 Charter Amendment Disposition of City-Owned Real Property. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. We will go to the Labor Committee, Councilwoman Snead.
Nothing from Labor. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Land Use, Councilman Rotheringur.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because I've had some technical difficulties. The Land Use Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, October 14th, at 1:00 p.m. on Bill 20-0570 Zoning Railroad Rights of Way, Right-of-Way Billboards. Wednesday, October 14th, at 1:10 p.m. on Bill 20-0591 Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lots at 115 and 118 Mount Clare Street. Wednesday, August 21st, at 1:00 p.m. on Bill 20-0556 Rezoning Located at 2087 Drew Park Drive. Wednesday, August 21st, at 1:10 p.m. on Bill 20-0566 Rezoning at 3215 West Belvedere Avenue, 3317 through 3323 West Belvedere Avenue, 5101 through 5103 Denmore Avenue, 5100 Denmore Avenue. Also, Wednesday, October 21st, at 1:20 p.m. on Bill 20-568 Plan Unit Development Amendment to Stadium Place. Wednesday, October 28th, at 1:00 p.m. on Bill 20-0508 Rezoning Located at 5401 Plaski Highway. Wednesday, October 28th, at 1:10 p.m. on Bill 20-0567 It's a Rezoning at 407 Bedigoss Road. Also, Wednesday, October 28th, at 1:20 p.m. on Bill 20-0595 It's a Rezoning 1103 through 1109 North Washington Street. Thursday, October 29th, at 1:00 p.m. on Bill 20-0594 It's a Rezoning at 2426 Pennsylvania Avenue. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Rotheringur.
The committee will meet on Thursday, October 29th, at 1:10 p.m. on Bill 20-0614 It's a Rezoning at 4015 Foster Avenue, 4000 Hudson Street, and 801 South Haven. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Rotheringur.
The committee will meet on Thursday, November 5th, at 1:20 p.m. on Bill 20-0620 It's a Plan Unit Development Amendment to Green Mount West Arts Entertainment District. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Rotheringur.
The committee will meet on Thursday, November 5th, at 1:00 p.m. on Bill 20-0619 It's a Rezoning 1904-1910 Light Street. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Rotheringur.
The committee will meet on Thursday, November 5th, at 1:10 p.m. on Bill 20-0621 It's a Rezoning at 2 East Wells Street. Mr. President, this is the last one. I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended.
The committee will meet on-
Chair recognizes Councilman Rotheringur.
Sorry, Mr. President.
You're fine, go ahead.
Thursday, November 5th, at 1:20 p.m. on Bill 20-0622 It's a Rezoning at 1312, 1314, 1316, and 1318 East Ford Avenue. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Public Safety Committee, Councilman Shifler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry, Mr. President. The first announcement will be for Council Bill 20-0606. We will have a hearing for banning face surveillance technology in Baltimore at the request of Councilman Burnett on October 20th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. We will also be hosting a meeting on, we'll reconvening Bill Number 19-0431 Towing Licensing and Regulations on September 30th, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. And it will be televised on WebEx and Charm TV.
Thank you very much. Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development, Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will hear City Council Bill 20-0537 Thursday, October 1st, 2020, virtually. It's the sale of property, 3200 East Biddle Street. Also, the Taxation, Finance, and Economic Development Committee will have the second work session for Council Bill Number 20-0593 on Thursday, October 1st, 2020, at 10:01 a.m. And it's the second work session for the tax sale of properties exemption from sale. And that's it.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Transportation Committee, Councilman Dorsey, last but not least, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee will hold a legislative oversight hearing this Wednesday, two days from today, September 23rd, at 3:00 p.m. for the Baltimore City Police Department to address response and reporting of incidents involving vulnerable road users. And I just want to note that while it is short notice that we are making this formal announcement of the hearing here, I did give notice to the Commissioner in writing last week and also to Government Relations several weeks before, maybe a couple of weeks before that, that I would be announcing this hearing today in order to give them an opportunity to prepare for this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Bullock, do you have something you want to address on this or general announcements?
I had to go back. I neglected to ask to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing, so I would go back and do that with Bill 200606.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Housing and Urban Affairs Committee will be hearing City Council Bill 200606 Ordinance Indigenous Peoples' Day, and that will be Tuesday, September 29th, at 2:30 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thanks. Regular announcements, and I will start the regular announcements. Thank you all, all colleagues, for being here today. And I'm just going to start on a somber note. We, as of today, have lost 240 residents of the city of Baltimore, 40 homicides in Baltimore City. I want to ask the Vice President to honor a moment of silence for them and their families and just constantly remind us that we have a lot of work to do as we work towards rebuilding and reimagining what public safety means in Baltimore and the requirements that there's going to be put on, not just one city agency, but all city agencies, to work together of how we can build better people, how we can hold people accountable who are committing violence in our city, how we can hold people accountable who are bringing weapons into our city, but how we can also hold ourselves accountable and think about what we can do as individual citizens in addition to our jobs as elected officials to make Baltimore a safer city and through accountability, through action, not just in words, but in practice of how we live our daily lives. And so, Madam Vice President, I want you to please honor a moment of silence for everyone that we've lost this year, including COVID-19 and, of course, the overdose epidemic as well. I would also like to remind everyone that we are still dealing with COVID-19 and flu season is upon us. So if you haven't already, I got mine this morning. Please go out and get your flu shot. Make sure that you do that. It's important that you do that any year, especially when we're dealing with a pandemic like COVID-19. We don't want folks to not understand that they have one and not the other or both. We don't know the impacts of how that's going to have, what impact it's going to have on us during flu season. We have to continue to practice physical distancing, continue to wash our hands, continue to do everything that we can do to prevent us from getting COVID-19 and the flu, especially as it's going to be moving to the cooler months and we are no longer going to be able to be outside in the way that we all love to be. We have to remember that you cannot relax your guard. COVID-19 is still very real and will be even realer as flu season arrives. So thank you very much to all of my council members for indulging there. Chair recognizes Councilman Henry.
What was that number again?
Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, 240.
240, thank you.
Councilman Henry? You're fine.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to also request a specific moment of silence tonight for our former colleague, Councilman Ken Harris. This weekend was the 12th anniversary of him being taken from us during a crime at the Northwood Shopping Center, and I wanted to make sure that we do, as we do every year, remember his memory with a moment of silence at that night's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett? Councilman Bullock? Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're all cooped up these days, and it's taken a big toll on a lot of industries and taken a toll on a lot of people's jobs and livelihoods. And the arts community has not been missed in this. That is, the arts community has taken a hit as well. But there are a couple of things happening that are providing an opportunity for artists' work to be seen and experienced and as well for the public to get out and experience art or stay at home and experience art in ways beyond virtual exhibitions. So the two things that I want to mention, there's an exhibition closing this Friday, a group show called Close Read featuring three artists, Akia Breon Brown, Shan Wallace, and Savannah Wood. These are three artists exhibiting work derived from digging into the archives of the Afro-American newspaper. And that work is being projected onto the front of the building at the Deutsch Foundation's Connect and Collect Gallery, which happens to be at the site of the former offices of the Afro newspaper at 2519 Charles Street, North Charles. This is an exhibition that is best seen after nightfall as it is a projection onto the building. It's closing this Friday, and so I suggest getting out there at 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock. Taharka Brothers will also be there, so if you're inclined to eat some ice cream, the best ice cream in Baltimore, then I suggest getting out there for that and experience art in a socially-distanced quasi-gallery-like setting. The other thing is something that you can experience from home. One of Baltimore's, I guess, one of Baltimore's most acclaimed small theater companies that does incredible, remarkable work, the Acme Corporation Theater, in the absence of the ability to produce work indoors, has produced a play in a box. And one box is for one person to experience. It is titled "The Institute for Counterfeit Memory," play in a box. And you can find out how to get your play in a box at theacmeorganization.org. I've got mine sitting over here. I got to make the time to have my play experience. My wife is going to have her separate from me, and I'm sure we'll talk about it afterwards. But my box is unique to me, as her box is unique to her. And I suggest everybody get onto theacmeorganization.org and get a box. Thank you, Mr. Council President and everybody.
Thank you. We're going to go back to Councilman Shifler.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're coming back to you about one of your committee announcements.
Okay.
Mr. President? I got it, Kayla. For facial recognition, you need to suspend the rules.
Okay. I'm trying to follow the rules, but I'll suspend them. Give me one second. All right, should I start over or just suspend the rules for it?
Yeah, you have to read, just say, you have to make a motion to suspend the rules to announce a hearing, then go through the normal process.
Okay. All right, so let me move to suspend rules 10-2 to announce a hearing.
Without objection, the rules will be suspended. The rules are suspended. Chair recognizes Councilman Shifler.
Yeah, thank you. The Public Safety Committee will hold a hearing on Council Bill 20-0606 on October 20th for banning face surveillance technology in Baltimore, and that will be at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Council Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, my quick community announcement that tomorrow, and Council President, I'm going to definitely make sure you get an invite and hope you can fix your schedule for tomorrow morning, but we're going to be doing a groundbreaking in Park Heights at 9:08, it's either 9:00 or 9:30 tomorrow morning-
I will be there.
-for Renaissance Row. So I'll get you more information. This is like the first real housing groundbreaking for, of course, the wonderful Park Heights. So I definitely would love you to be there. And we're going to be practicing social distancing and wearing our masks, and it's, some key people will be there, and it will be live as well. We're going to, the next council meeting is Monday, October 5th, 2020, held virtually at 5:00 p.m. And we have a long list of moment of silence here, so bear with me. Of course, a moment of silence for the wonderful Supreme Court Justice Ruth Ginsburg, also the former Councilman Ken Harris. Uh, also, uh, the former, um, Councilman Ken Harris. Also, the former Councilman Edwin Johnson, which is also the brother of Councilman Robert Stokes. Uh, also, uh, Mr. Ted Lassiter, which, um, was, uh, for the longest time, a, uh, city, worked in the City Real Estate Department, well-known and well-respected around the entire city. Also, Sister, uh, Reginald Gertis of the Obley Sisters. I hope I said her name correct. And also Frederica J. Charpent. Um, could you let Councilwoman Clark would like to correct me for her last name?
Yeah, Madam, uh, Councilwoman Clark, we have the floor.
Thank you. Can I just say a couple of words about, it is, um, Sister Reginald Gertis of the Obley Order, who for years, huh, may, uh, led Saint Francis School up there in Johnston Square, and she did not take prisoners, um, and was a wonderful principal and a wonderful teacher. And if, if, uh, if the Vice President and the President allow, I, I would like to also mention Edwin Johnson. We served together on this council, when, the old Second District. And he was a wonderful representative and a delightful, delightful person. Love him to death. Um, and finally, I would like to just say something that a friend said to me about, uh, RBG. Um, and it's this, and I can be corrected by my colleagues, and I wouldn't mind, I just hope it's true. According to Midrash Jewish Wisdom, only the most righteous people die on the eve of Rosh Hashanah. It signifies that they were given the full measure of a year. They were, they are the ones God has held back until the last moment. They were needed the most. Thank you both.
Thank you. Madam Vice President?
Thank you. And may we also have a moment of silence for the now, uh, two hundred and forty victims of homicides, our continued, um, pandemic of COVID nineteen, and our continued epidemic, um, of opioid use. And, uh, that's it.
Thank you. There being no further business, this concludes the ninety-first meeting of the seventy-second term of the Baltimore City Council. Uh, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on October the fifth at five P M. Thank you.